The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, February twenty twenty four, February twenty four, twenty twenty five, will be called to order at seven P M. At this time, I'd like to have Alderman Gay do the invocation because he is so good at that, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Amen. Let's bow our heads. Lord God, we're so grateful to be here this afternoon and join as we gather to do people's business. Before doing so, Lord God, I graciously ask that you cover and bless each head in the room, Lord God. Lord God, those not in the room, Lord God, I ask that you meet their needs, whether it be food, shelter, any other needs or things that they're going through, God. Let them know that you can be a guiding force, Lord God. Let them know that you can be a friend, Lord God. Lord God, for those who lost their lives in our communities over the last few weeks, we ask that you bless their families, Lord God, as we know that communities are grieving, Lord God. Give them the strength to carry on, Lord God. Give them the strength to continue to be engaged and involved in community. We're so grateful for the opportunity to gather here and to hopefully continue to do the people's work. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Buckley.
Yeah.
Alderman Huntley.
Here.
All women present. Alderman. Alderman.
Present. Present.
He's muted.
Alderman Shanda Meyer.
Present.
Alderman Gay.
Present.
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Present.
You, Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Could I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add F T eight dash twenty five, F T nine dash twenty five, and resolution R eleven twenty five, Director of Finance Brittany Moran, on first reader, and to remove, sorry, A P five dash twenty five.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
You, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and Q. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, beginning with I D fourteen twenty five, citation, Annapolis Santa Run.
Right. Anyone hearing speedos? All right.
Thank you guys so much for being here and thanks for the incredible service that you've done for our community and that you've, so many of you guys have done every year. So, on behalf of the residents of the city of Annapolis, we're pleased to confer upon you this city council citation in recognition of your service to the community by chairing the twenty twenty four Santa Run and by previously having chaired the Santa Run. As Annapolis Fire Department firefighter, you both already give yourself each day and every day on shift. This work goes above and beyond the normal duties. So, you coordinate the trucks and drivers, plan the stops, sort all those goodies from generous Annapolis residents, and then wrap and deliver the gifts. It's a Christmas miracle how it all gets done in such a short period of time, but we know you've made a big difference in the lives of our young residents, those who gave and those who received. We thank you for your work and your continued success in the city. Thank you all so much. Awesome. Thank you.
You want to say a couple of words? We always love that because, you know.
Yeah, you're more interesting.
How much love you are in this community and if any, just for background, you know, these guys on their own time go into communities that are not as fortunate as us and bring a lot of joy. So, we really appreciate it. I don't know how many years it's been now, but it's a twenty one years, an amazing effort, and just shows how much this department cares about this city.
Yes, can you hear me?
Can hear.
All right, we'll turn it back to you guys while we figure out our technical difficulties with all of them. I didn't know we were gonna have to speak. So, Chief Mewitz is retired. He did it for twenty years. Every single year, we spend, I would say it takes three months worth of preparations, planning, organizing well over two hundred and some volunteers, multiple organizations. Annapolis City Police helps Annapolis, or Anarona County Sheriff helps. This year, we collected well over twenty five hundred toys. We distributed to twelve of the elementary schools throughout the city of Annapolis and Anarona County, and I mean, it was just a really good event. The leftover toys that were actually donated to the University of Maryland Children's E R, and when the delivery truck showed up, they were more than excited to receive them because they had very few toys left for the year. So, it was all in all, it was a great event, and Alderman, Alderman Huntley from Lacey and Pindell Charles, we appreciate all of you for also attending and helping us out as well.
Thank you. Any audio yet?
I think so. Can you hear me?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. This was the first year I had the opportunity to ride along, and it was the most enlightening experience I've had in a long time. Not only the work of the firefighters who put this together for over twenty years, but the community who came out in large numbers. I don't know how many thousands of toys you collected, but a big thank you to all of the communities that have been doing this for so long. They've truly made a difference in our community and around the state. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
City Attorney, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is I D fifteen twenty five, citation, Zia Bocaccio of Alpaca International.
All right. Well, I'm very excited to do this. You know, I consider myself a small business mayor, and there's two things that make this city special. It's the residents and it's the small businesses that, you know, really are so unique. This is one of the, I'd say, in my view, the best businesses that we have in this city, and not only do they take care of the residents, but so connected to the midshipmen and, and just in a special location. So, I'm really honored to get, to give this to you today. Hopefully, it will get me from here. On behalf of the city of Annapolis and the residents of our city, we proudly recognize Zia Bocaccio, I can never get it right, Bocaccio, the owner of Alpaca International, for her outstanding contribution to the charm and vibrancy of Annapolis. Your creative initiative of bringing alpacas and an alpaca handler to Main Street during Midnight Madness each year delights residents. It's the biggest hit of the show and visitors alike, creating an unforgettable moment showcasing the unique character of our community. Your dedication to enhancing the holiday shopping experience has brought smiles to many faces. We applaud your creativity, entrepreneurial spirit, commitment to making Annapolis a more engaging and welcoming place for all. With deep gratitude and appreciation, we honor your efforts and joy you bring to the city of Annapolis, and we look forward to another twenty five or fifty years, whatever you'll stay with us, but you make this place special. Thank you so much, Zia. Now, we're gonna make you say some words, and then we're gonna make you come up and get a photo.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, from the bottom of my heart, I wanna give you a thanks for this great honor. It's been a journey, twenty years. However, there will not be a journey without a community, and that for me has been Annapolis. And I'm so grateful for the opportunity, and also, I wanna give my commitment to stay part of the community as much as the time permits, and it's been an incredible joy to be part of, of this incredible city, community, and family. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I keep guys come up for photo. Little, can see pick on this side or?
And I may say so.
We're not using this fashionable here.
Our, our alpaca family.
Oh, really?
Of the alpaca. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is I D, I D forty five twenty five, citation for Bowie State, I think it's Bowie State University Entrepreneurship Innovation Center.
Right. Well, we love the connection with Bowie State, so please come forward, Bowie State.
Yeah, just where you want.
Thank you all for the extraordinary work that you continue to do. We're just so happy to be able to present these city council citations to you all and to Bowie State University Entrepreneurship Innovation Center. City of Annapolis City Council Citation, on behalf of the city of Annapolis residents, we are honored to confer upon you the city council citation in recognition of your exceptional support and commitment to our community's success. Your generous contribution and collaboration have been critical in the engagement of our youth of Annapolis in entrepreneurial thinking, career readiness, and collegiate opportunities, a catalyst for our No Harm Career and College Exploration Initiative. Over the last three years, this initiative has transformed students' lives at Annapolis Senior High School, helping them develop a growth mindset and invaluable exposure to higher education and entrepreneurship by empowering them to dream boldly and achieve their fullest potential. We are grateful for helping us take this transformative step towards shaping brighter futures for the next generation. Thank you. Congratulations to you all.
Hold on. Do you want to tell a few words about the program?
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name's John Etta Hardy. I'm the Executive Director of the Entrepreneurship Innovation Center at Bowie State University, and we are a campus-wide initiative. We're a hub for resources and entrepreneurial activities for not just students at Bowie, but also the community. And to empower and change young minds is, is, is wealth, and we're so happy and so grateful to be a part of it, and thank you for letting us do that. You want to say a few words?
Yes.
And I just want to acknowledge Farouk, who was our program manager for the event, and also a B S U alum that went through our entrepreneurship program and really saw the value of it. So, thank you for bringing it to Annapolis.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is petition, reports, and communications, beginning with update from the mayor.
Okay, good evening. I wanna start out tonight by alerting the public to a widespread phishing scam making the rounds via text messages. These messages indicate unpaid Annapolis parking fees or fines. There are variations in language, but the scammers are primarily interested in getting your name, date, birth, address, and credit card information. Do not respond or click the link, report as junk, and then delete. They are definitely not from the city of Annapolis. The message, these messages have been received here in Annapolis, but also in California, Nebraska, North Carolina, and the Eastern Shore. People who get the messages may be in Annapolis or may park in Annapolis, but there are also those who have never been here who are getting the same messages. These are similar text messages to a scam late last year that targeted EZ Pass and Tolls. The phishing scam has been reported to state police and F B I. We are helping us, who are helping us track down and shut down this operation. Thank you. Tomorrow night is the last regular scheduled State of Black Annapolis event at the Bush Library on West Street, starting at five P M. The February eleventh event that got canceled due to snow will be rescheduled for March, so stay tuned to city social media for channels for new dates and possibly a new location for that event. Again, I wanna thank Etatola Ajai and his team for putting together a strong educational information and entertaining program week throughout Black History Month. In addition, our recent key to the city presentation to Kendall Dorsey, who grew up in Robinwood and went to Hollywood under, he grew up in Robinwood, under difficult circumstances, is now, and is now a celebrity hairstylist to the likes of Rihanna, Nicki Minaj, just to name a few. It was great to celebrate, the celebrate, it was a great celebration of the strength of resilience in our African American community and the amazing talents of Mr. Dorsey. Want to give him a little round of applause, please. He was particularly impressed, I was particularly impressed by how humble and touched he was to be honored by his hometown and by all the ways he gave back while he was here, including visits to our local high schools and workshops with local hairstylists. Thank you to all who came out to be part of that wonderful celebration. On Wednesday, Annapolis Police will present, lest we forget, a program at First Baptist Church on West Washington Street. The program will honor African American officers in the Annapolis Police Department from nineteen sixty, the first one, and that's not so long ago, to present day. The celebration starts at six P M. and it is open to the public, and it shows how far we have come and, you know, need to go. Also, I wanna thank the hardworking volunteers of the Watershed Stewart's Academy Save Our Trees program for their work this past weekend on cleaning up the area around Brewer Hill and behind the Annapolis Police Department on Taylor Avenue. This area includes the headwaters of College Creek, so the trash that was cleared out would have also, will also impact our waterways, and it's very important work. So, since twenty twenty two, they have cleared invasive English ivy for more than six, six thousand seven hundred trees. Much of that work in Truxton Park. Let's give them a round of applause for an amazing job. On Sunday, March ninth, the city will officially kick off the twenty twenty five parade season with our annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, followed by Shamrock the Doc concert, Shamrock the Doc concert. The parade steps off at one P M. on Sunday from Amos Garrett Boulevard at West Street and makes its way down along West Street Church Circle, Main Street, and ends at City Dock where the Shamrock the Doc concert will take place. This is our biggest parade of the year, and we ask residents and visitors to pay attention to parking restrictions and temporary road closures, but especially we ask them to have fun, stay safe, and may the road rise to meet you all. Also, that night, we switched back to daylight savings time, giving us a little more daylight to get drunk with. That wasn't, that wasn't written into my script, honestly. We are aware that some of our residents are, are affected and would potentially be affected by changes with the federal government, including government cutbacks, to get a little more serious here. I would like to thank Governor Moore and his team, who are coordinating with local jurisdictions across the state to gather data and share information. They have set up resource, a resource page and website at maryland.gov, which includes resources for unemployment, job search, and career support, health insurance, legal resources, and links to important employment rules and regulations. To find the page online, use the keywords, resources or impacted workers. As a community with close ties to our federal agencies and operations, we are gonna have to support one another, help our neighbors and friends who may be impacted at this time. In addition to those resources, Anarona County's Immigration Affairs Commission has put together an eight-page resource guide in English and in Spanish to help families who may be new to our community and to be prepared. These include resources for interacting with federal agencies, preparing for emergencies, avoiding scams, seeking legal assistance, reporting hate crimes. To learn more, visit the Office of Multicultural Affairs at A A County dot org. During tonight's meeting, we'll introduce R dash eight dash twenty five, a mayor, older person, and city manager compensation. This resolution accepts into the record the report of the twenty twenty five Salary Review Commission as required by city code. To help the public to better understand the process, I wanna make it clear that this legislation does not impact the current mayor or city council. It will only apply to the next mayor and council, who will be elected in November. I also want to be clear that tonight's resolution does not enact any of the recommendations of the report. Tonight, we simply are accepting the report into the record, and then later, under separate legislation, we will debate and vote on what the future compensation for the future mayor and future council should be. Of course, we can follow their recommendations of this community, of committee, or we can come up with something of our own. I'm sure we will in an election year. I wanna thank the members of the commission for their quick but thorough work on the report. Under the requirements of the city codes, they had a very short timeline, and they met their deadlines by working very hard with the utmost professionalism, and I wanna give them a big round of applause because they were a great professional. Both Democrats and Republicans, and, and they really worked hard, so thank you. Lastly, tonight, I wanna thank Mayor Christopher Bowlem of Frankston, Australia, who visited Annapolis early this month while he was in Washington, D C. on a diplomatic mission. Frankston and Annapolis are alike in that we are coastal communities with about twenty five miles of coast, give or take, from major, from a major metropolitan area outside of Melbourne. We both have military connections in that we have the Naval Academy, and Frankston has a very big dynamic veteran population. We have challenges in affordable housing, declining biodiversity in our waterways, and like most coastal communities around the globe, challenges with flooding and sea level rise. We had a productive conversation, followed by a meeting with officials from the U S Naval Academy. As we continue to earn notice from governments around the globe for our work on resilience and our unique approach to funding the work at City Dock through the P three, we expect to see more leaders reaching out to us. These mutual exchanges help us to see things through a different lens. It boosts collaboration, enhances knowledge sharing, and helps us improve our team's approach to problem solving. Governments can get stuck in the rigidity of bureaucracy and sometimes siloed, thinking, and sometimes siloed thinking. These meetings and international relationships help us by promoting a culture of collaboration, utilizing technology, embracing external expertise to aid our problem solving. We thank Mayor Bowlem for taking the time out of his packed international schedule to make his way to our historic capital city. Thank you all, and now let's get on with the meeting. Mr. City Attorney, next. Thank you all. See you, guys.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is reports by standing committees.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on February nineteenth and considered a real bevy of legislation. It was a busy meeting. We won't go through every one of the amendments that we considered at the outdoor, for outdoor dining, but suffice it to say, we took a good, hard look at all of them. We recommended favorably the radio tower lease with the city. We did ultimately recommend favorably the outdoor dining requirements with some amendments, recommended favorably parking and towing regulations, and a couple others, a couple other resolutions, and we will have our next meeting this coming Wednesday at ten thirty A M., in which we, I believe at this point, are not looking at any legislation, but are hoping to have some important discussions about both the last budget and making sure that we hire everybody who is put into it, and this upcoming budget and how that will be developed. Thank you.
You, Alderman Finlayson. Just getting you ready, if you need it.
I have a report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Neal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Transportation Committee met on February twelfth. We had an update from parking contractors. We also had a report from our deputy city manager. We also had a report from our Deputy City Manager for Resiliency on our electric mobility plan for the city. That information found on the city site if you could. At the fleet manager, current city fleet. Our next meeting is March 12th at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Environmental Matters met on February 19th and we did recommend favourably R5424, but only with first three amendments because we did not take action on the others. And that's the change in the Position, Classification and Pay Plan. We were trying to focus on just environmental amendments and related issues. As far as general discussion, if anyone's interested, we had a couple of good discussions about tree canopy goal or new tree canopy goal that we adopted in the comp plan. It was 50% tree canopy by 2050. We're currently at, I think, about 43%. And we talked about how that's connected, it's now funded through our Watershed Restoration Fund. And so the forester was there, Mr. Adams, to remind us of some of the necessary programme costs if we are serious about our tree canopy goal. Because that's one thing I said was when we pushed back the date, that I was only okay with pushing the date back if we made it to funding the tree canopy. The other thing we talked about was the stormwater fee and that was presentation from Public Works. And they have, they went over, it's StanTech there, StanTech has put together a report on their FY24 stormwater fee. We're going to review that and have a discussion about it at our next meeting. And, oh, and the other thing to note for the stormwater fee is it sounds like they are able to make the shift to the, what you call the ERU model. It's based more on the actual impervious surface, so it should make things a bit more equitable and bring in a little more money. And that's about it. Our next meeting is March 13th at 3:00 PM and we hopefully also will be talking about the green roofs on the bus shelter proposal. Thank you.
You, Alderman Shanamay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters met on February 18th, where we heard O3224, the fire sprinkler system clarification, where we recommended favourably with amendments. We heard O1024, outdoor dining requirements. We postponed while we were finalising some of the amendments that were brought forward. Just, we wanted to have them written down so we could actually dive into them in depth. And then we recommended favourably O2324, parking and towing regulations. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 19th at 6:30 PM.
You, Alderman Pendell-Chauncey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Standing Committee met on February the 13th and as we're doing this year, we're focusing on award a month. So we focused on Ward Four in February and we thank Alderman Finlayson for being a part of this conversation. From the Police Department, Chief Jackson, Captain McGeez and Operational Captain Howard were present to answer questions from the committee. Office of Emergency Management, Chief Kevin Simmons was there from that to present questions to him and answer those questions. And the Fire Department was there and Deputy Chief Powell was there to answer questions from the committee and we were very delighted to do that. The one piece of legislation that we had, O3224, parking and towing regulations, recommended favourably as amended. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, March 3rd, here in Council Chambers at 6:30 PM and we will be focusing on Ward Eight at that meeting. Thank you so much.
You, Alderman Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Human Welfare Committee will meet March 17th, 6:30 PM.
You, who else? Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
Right, first person to come up and speak, please come up and state your full name and address. Bilal McGowan. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
Okay, so I can repeat that. My name is Bilal McGowan. I live at 32 Pleasant Street here in Annapolis, Maryland. This is my daughter London Ead. And we're coming before you today on behalf of the Eads family. So we are trying to get some answers about the Robert Eads Park that's at the bottom of, I believe it's, I don't know if it's still considered Clay Street, but it's been in the works since 2021. I remember it being a press release in 2022, we had some meetings. We also had a meeting at our church at First Baptist in 2023. We thought everything was approved. We saw plans and different things, but still nothing has happened right now and it's kind of an eyesore to the community, it's not being maintained at all, it's trash and debris there. So we were just trying to see what was going on. It's been four years and we haven't seen anything going on. We're just trying to figure out to get some answers.
It is about to start, I promise you, it's about to be awarded, but Alderman O'Neill was talking to me today on the project, so maybe I could hand it over to you if you'd...
I was actually going to ask if we could have our city manager give the report that we discussed today.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Michael Malinoff, City Manager. First of all, I want to say I remember Robert Fondle. He was someone I would consider a good friend and we were in this council room many times together and for the most part on the same side of issues. So I very much appreciate wanting to get this forward. I was contacted today by Alderwoman O'Neill. I reached out to our procurement officer and he quickly sent me a status report, so I can give you exactly where it is. There were, there's newspaper advertisement is being prepared for release the week of February 24th. The posting of the solicitation will either be Wednesday, the 26th or Thursday, the 27th this week. The pre-bid meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 5th. Bid due date will be Friday, March 28th. Award and contract development, vetting and distribution of bids, Friday, March 28th. Award memorandum, Thursday, April 3rd. Posting of intent to award, Friday, April 4th. Contract abstract development, Friday, April 4th. The contract award could take up to three weeks or so depending on the time to obtain signatures. Thirty bonds will be obtained under the contract execution. So it's moving quickly and by beginning mid-April, we should have a contract award and understand the construction schedule from there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is it, is it something that can be told to why it took so long to happen?
Well, a couple of different reasons. First of all, our procurement office is quite small and we basically had the same couple of people doing procurements for the city for about 30 years. The procurement officer retired and we hired a new procurement officer and then his deputy, the deputy that had been in the office for many years too, passed away fairly recently. So we've had a lot of turnover. The new person is skilled and knows what he's doing, but he's new to the city and it's taken a lot of time to get up to speed. And I will modestly say that the mayor has a lot of projects. He's very ambitious with wanting to get a lot of things done in the city and so we're trying to push through a lot of work at the same time and this included. I'm also pleased to announce we're very close to announcing a Central Services Director, was an initiative that we put together to help better coordinate capital projects like these and our procurement process. It's difficult in a city this size and the amount of projects we have, we only have a couple of people do it. So our hope is that going forward, when this person comes on board and with the additional experience of the new people, that any previous delays will be minimized.
Thank you.
And Bilal, I just wanted to let you know that Alderman, your older woman wanted a full, this is not the normal procedure for us to sort of call this out, but we understand that this is taking a ridiculous, long amount of time. But I promise you, before I leave office, it has to be finished and it will be finished. And I just want to say hi to London because we remember London coming in when she was shorter than the podium there and now she's taller than her mum, which is awesome, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
You can have this, by the way.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gay.
Just a quick point of order. I don't know, the mics have to be fixed. I can't hear a thing and we're having to talk like you can't hear anything. Please, somebody turn them up.
Okay, you got that, guys? See if we can get it on it. Okay. Next up, Godfrey Phelps.
Evening, everybody. I'm a little concerned myself about Robert Eads Park. I've just been informed that we are getting money from the state and the county. Is that true?
That's true.
Okay. So right now, how many contractors are in the bidding process?
Godfrey, this is just a listening session, so just, we're not here to answer questions, so it's just a listening session, so just...
Well, see, I couldn't hear that gentleman there that quick. I think I might have a little hearing problem, but you know, like this thing been taking so long, I find it ridiculous. So you know, the public is, you know, concerned about how many people in the bidding process and when those bids will go out. Is the problem answering that question or what?
It's just not a question and answer session, so we're just here to listen to you for three minutes and then we can have someone come back to you with answers afterwards.
The gentleman over there, is he in charge of getting the ball rolling or what? The one that was doing the talking before I got up here?
That's the city manager, so yeah, he's ultimately responsible, yes.
Is that where I can get that information from?
Yep, yep.
Okay. That's all, I'm just curious because you know, it's like three years and I did talk to the gentleman that was doing the survey, so I'll be in touch. And what's your name, sir?
Mike Malinoff is the city...
Mike who?
Malinoff.
Malinoff?
Yeah, M-A-L-L-I-N-O-F-F.
Okay, I'll be in touch with you.
And I would just say that we are going into the water, so when you do anything, we're doing a living shoreline, that means you have to bring in the federal government.
Right.
So there were approvals that we had to get before we could start from...
Well, two years ago, I told a guy, you gotta get with natural resources on that waterfront.
And we've done all that.
You've done all that, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Next up, Antonia Barry.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderwomen and Aldermen. My name is Antonia Barry. I'm a city resident. I've lived in my home for 28 years.
Just your full address, just for the record, please.
100 South Cherry Grove Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk to you this evening to request further review of the City of Annapolis' Homestead Property Tax Limit for taxable increases in assessments and request that the limit be lowered before the state deadline. Per the state website, the Homestead Property Tax Credit Programme was established to help homeowners deal with large assessment increases in their principal residence. State law established this credit. The Homestead Credit limits the increase in taxable assessments each year to a fixed percentage of every county and municipality in Maryland, up to a maximum 10% limit each year. Currently, the city's limit is set to the maximum of the allowable increases in assessments, whereas the Anorond County's taxable assessment increases are currently limited to 2%. That's a tremendous difference. I personally don't understand how this differential exists for city residents compared to our long-term neighbours just down the road, for what appears to be mostly similar services. I did a little analysis on my own property tax bill. The city portion is already approximately 20%, 25% higher than the county portion of my property tax bill. And that's before any credits are accounted for. For being a 28-year resident of my own home, I have developed a 50% county homestead credit, for which I'm grateful to the county for, because it's certainly helped. However, upon closer look, I realised that the city portion of my property tax bill, for that portion, I only receive a 3.4% credit. That's a huge difference between 50% credit and a 3.4% credit earned over 28 years. I was blown away, as should every city of Annapolis' long-term resident. Why is this the case? How is a city really helping long-term homeowners deal with large assessment increases by allowing such high percentages of increases? I am fortunate, my husband and I both work full-time, but there are plenty of retirees, single-earner households who have lived in Annapolis for much, if not all of their lives, and yet due to the popularity of Annapolis, find themselves dealing with dramatic increases in their assessment taxes due to the city high limit on taxable assessment increases. I wonder how the city credit is really protecting long-term city residents from these dramatically rising assessments. We as city of Annapolis, as residents of City of Annapolis, have to brace ourselves for the upcoming major increases in assessments and associated taxes that are coming in the next three years. I am asking you to do better for the long-term residents of the city and don't make them pay such a large premium compared to our long neighbors in the county who are living as close as Town Centre and Reva Road. Help our neighbours develop a Homestead Credit that will help them as they live through or as they approach retirement to allow them to stay in their homes and not be taxed out of our city. Please find more efficient ways to offer services or have the county take over some of the services. Please lower the limit to match the county's homestead limit or at a minimum, lower it to 4% or less. Thank you. And I appreciate you all serving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you send that to us, please?
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak? Thank you all for your comments, thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Sir, the next item on the agenda is appointments, beginning with AP 125, Appointment, Ms. Rebecca Britt, Civil Service Board.
Mr.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that's the consent calendar. Beginning with appointments, AP 125, AP 225, Appointment, Mr. Clinton Ramsden, Board of Appeals and Supplemental Appropriations under $50,000, FT 725, General Affordable Housing Trust Transfer, Office of Community Services, Department of Planning and Zoning.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor. I just was asked by the Chair of our Board of Appeals to note to the council that Mr. Ramsden is being appointed just as the alternate to the Board of Appeals. He just wanted me to make that clear.
Thank you so much. Begin a motion on that, please.
So moved.
Point of order, are we skipping AP 125?
So that's all in the consent calendar?
Oh, so you're carrying him as a whole? Okay. Thank you.
You, Madam City Clerk, please call a roll. All right.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
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 Is it possible?
And I, I would ask Julian if we can get the audio up a little bit for everybody. They are asking about that. But, uh, Alderman Finlayson was nice and loud. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Alman Gay?
Is it possible if we could have a, um, the updated list of the Board of Appeals and its membership? I, I know we just got the, like, all of the boards send us a report and all that stuff, and I just want to make, make sure that that's...
Okay.
It's the same one?
City Manager. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous, beginning with annual reports from Boards of Committees and Commissions, ID 4825.
Okay, we're gonna, um, uh, uh, enter a motion to accept, ID 48-25. We get a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Gonna get a second? Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of accepting into the record ID 48-25, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sorry. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is supplemental appropriations, $50,000 above, beginning with SA 2625, Capital Fund Department of Public Works, donation from Bearish Foundation.
Okay, uh, we want to take their money, so, uh, could I get a motion to approve SA 26-25?
So moved.
And also thank them, the foundation?
Second.
You, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is SA 2725, General Fund, Planning and Zoning, Reserve for One-Time Uses.
Now, could I get a motion on SA 27-25?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is fund transfers, beginning with FT 825, Fund General Department of Public Works, Snow and Ice, Transfer from DPW, ENC Contractual Services, $60,000. Transfer to DPW Contractual Services, $15,000, and transfer to DPW Snow Supplies and Other, $45,000.
Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Alman, is it Alman Gay had his hand up first and then, uh, Alman Savage?
Thank you. I have two...
Did we get a second?
We didn't, I didn't hear a second.
It was seconded.
You?
Thank you. I just have two quick questions, um... Thank you. I just, I, I know the mics are just, I don't know...
Bring it closer to you.
I mean, you want me to choke on the mic?
It's good when you're close. Except you're in a band.
Is this to cover, uh, contract, previous contract? Or is this to cover cost of the snow, the two previous snows that we just had? Or is this for anticipatory cost?
I'm gonna go to the city manager, but I would assume we went through all the salt that we had. We had to bring in a lot of resources to chip the ice. Mr. City Manager, or, or...
Having attended the Finance Committee meeting, from what I understood, it was for monies in anticipation of the possibility of additional snow and ice. If so, we'd have adequate funding. Our hope was that it would actually be insurance to keep it from...
And if not, it's just sent back to the general fund?
I think...
No, what the Finance Director said is there was additional funds that are available in contingent reserve if we needed it. So this was just moving around, just to...
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alman Savage?
Well, I would love more snow, which is why I have my snowflake socks on today. But, um, so I just want to point out to my colleagues, I think we need to figure out a way to, to work this out. But it brought to my attention that the city has been forced to remove snow on county roads, county sidewalks, because the county is refusing to remove snow on sidewalks, County Public Works. And so our Public Works has been generous enough to do it because they realize it's a public safety issue that needs to be responded to. Um, you know, I've mentioned to many of you, I've seen some people uh, getting pushed in wheelchairs in the middle of the street because the sidewalks have not been cleared in time. And, um, and, uh, you know, we've gotten complaints from SOFO. And so I'm really glad our Public Works is on top of it, but I do think this is something we need to work out with the county. I've hit a roadblock with, uh, well, both council, County Councilwoman Ravi and I have hit roadblocks with the County Public Works. And so we need to escalate. And, um, it'd be good if I'm not the only voice on this. So we could come together in some kind of dialogue with the county to work this out. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alman Savage. Uh, Alderman Neal, then Alman Huntley?
Thank you. On that note, could we get together a joint meeting to discuss um, and outline some of the, especially the trouble spots? It seems to be places where we might have city property, but it's a county street or a state street. Um, I know that there was, um, similar issues, um, between Ward 32 along West Street and those types of areas. The, uh, Phoenix Academy on Cedar Park Road, um, had no snow removal in front of it, um, for about 10 days after the first snowstorm. So would it be possible, and is that something that the city manager could orchestrate as far as getting a meeting with our county representative?
And would help if you could report the specifics in your neighborhood that you know of, just so we can consolidate those. So for the public, generally, you know, if it's a county building, you clear your sidewalks in front of your county building. If it's a city building, we try to do it. If it's a city public building, uh, um, and if the state does the same. Uh, we'll go to Alderman Finlayson. And then, sorry, Alman Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, could we include the Board of Education in that discussion? Uh, because I think some of the concerns, at least in my ward, were walkways for kids trying to get to school. And it was like the school board wasn't aware, so I think they should be part of a discussion about removing snow.
Thank you. Thank you. Alman Huntley?
Alman Savage, I just wanted to add that I have some legislation that's waiting on a staff report that will allow the city to clear walks in places where the owners have not and then charge them for it. And so we should, obviously, the, the preference would be for the county to just do it themselves, but we should make sure that the language in that is inclusive of the problem that you're describing, if it has to come to that.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Pendell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, when we paved recently Chickapan Round Road, realized that from West Street to Lincoln Court, it's city-owned, but from Lincoln Court, that little small piece up to Arastee Allen Forest Drive is state highway administration. So that's a little tiny piece, but still is very significant in that business roadway. So, thank you.
Uh, Alman Savage again?
Uh, thank you, Alman. I would love to take a look at that, um, because the county has actually the same, similar language, it sounds like, but they just haven't been utilizing it. So I think we should be careful with the wording.
If we all get around the table, um, but it was nice to have some snow. I had given up on it. Um, it'd been a couple of years, so I thought it was all over. Um, thank you. Uh, Alman, Shannon Meyer?
Uh, just gonna say for everybody's reference, we are having that work session on the, uh, post-snow operations, uh, this Thursday. So for members of the public and the members of the council, uh, will be informative. It's just gonna talk about our capacity, what went right, um, what steps we can take to improve upon and what the costs are going to be associated with that improvement, just so we all have as much information as possible. Uh, folks can join in person or virtually. I think it's gonna be very worthwhile.
Thank you. Alman Gay?
I don't know if this should be for the good of the order, but if, um, the, this Thursday, the work session is, can we double up topics in our work session? So that we can have, because we are way behind on our work session schedule, that request. And we have only a few more months to go, so... I know I had Arts in Public Places, which we missed.
Let me, just reach out on that and we'll see if that's... Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is FT 9, Fund Transfer, Transportation Department of Transportation Operations, Vehicle Operations, Transfer from Supplies and Other, $30,000. Transfer to Maintenance Contractual Services, $30,000.
Thank you. Could I get a motion on FT 9-25?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with Ordinance 0525, Speed Monitoring Cameras.
Are you on that? Anybody like to come forward and speak on speed monitoring cameras?
Will.
Going once, going twice, I'm sure, after we implement them? Okay, thank you. Uh, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is legislative actions, beginning with First Readers, beginning with Resolution R 825, Mayor, Alderperson, City Manager Compensation.
Could I get a motion on R 8-25 on First Reader?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to refer R 8-25 to public hearing. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is R 925, Annapolis City Council's Support for Maryland House Bill 226, Senate Bill 569, 2025.
Is there a motion to adopt R-9-25 on First Reader?
So moved. Second.
You? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I refer R-9-25 to the Annapolis Education Commission. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is R 1025, 2025 Annapolis Film Festival Fee Waiver.
Is there a motion to adopt R-10-25 on First Reader?
So moved.
Second.
You? On First Reader, Alman Gay?
And I'm just recusing myself from this, just to, uh, my participation in the film festival.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Refer R-10-25 to the Finance Committee. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda, Resolution R 1125, Director of Finance, Brittany Moran.
Okay, we are trying to get Brittany in place as quick as possible. Yep. So, um, would help out if we could all consider suspending the rules. Uh, is there a, there's a motion on that, please? Can I get it moved?
So moved. Second.
You? All those in favors, oh, uh, did you want to say something?
Well, the, uh, Michael Malinoff, City Manager, is, is, Ms. Moran couldn't be here tonight because one of her children was sick and they had to take her in. So I don't know whether you want to wait until the 10th, because she said she was gonna come and bring her family.
Okay, sure. Let's do that. I, I was under the impression that we need to move it, so no...
Absolutely agree, but under the circumstances.
Okay, I'm sorry about her sick child. Um, okay, let's just get that on the floor of First Reader.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Just for clar... Yeah, thank you, just for clarification. It's not going to a committee. It's just being postponed until we meet, um, in the 9th.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is legislative actions on Second Reader, Charter Amendment, CA 224, it's the first item, FY 2025, City of Annapolis Departmental Reorganization.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt CA-2-24 on Second Reader?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, okay, we have, uh, one amendment I see here. Is that it? Um, uh, the Savage Amendment. Um, if you want to move that, Alman Savage?
Uh, I'd like to move Amendment 1.
You?
Um, Alman Savage, could you just explain this a little bit more? So you're saying that this would keep it so that the city manager's pay is set the same way as Samaritan City Council, right? Voting for Amendment would do that? Uh, no, the intention is to have it be set by the professional, uh, pay scale that we adopt. Um, because currently it's set by the, the Compensation Commission, but it doesn't seem appropriate since it's not an elected position. It's, it's appointed and confirmed. We don't, we don't do this for any of the other appointed positions. Uh, so it just doesn't seem appropriate to be set. Uh, because it's a, it's a professional position that is cert, has all these certifications by ICMA. And so that, that's really, I think, what should influence the pay and not a, a commission. My view.
Alman, it?
So I support this amendment, um, as Alderman Savage described it. Um, the Compensation Commission really does consider the pay for the elected officials, the mayor and the council members. I, it's hard for me to remember when we did this, why the city manager was put in there, but it has certainly been the recommendation when we've been discussing the whole of the class in compensation, that we remove this, uh, from the charter and soon we'll have to remove it from the city code as well and leave the, uh, salary for the, uh, city manager as, as all the other city employees determine.
Comments on that?
So just to put a fine point on this, are you sure that it is still elsewhere in the code? Because I guess what I'm wondering is, if we take this out of the charter, but it is still in the code, it would still be enforced. It would just be easier for us to change it on the line.
So, uh, we'll have to, we get to O 3424, we'll have to see. I'm not sure, not sure that, uh, O 3424 speaks to that. No, it does not. So we'll have to look at the code itself and probably come up with...
Maybe Alman Savage has some clarification?
Uh, yeah, well, so this particular, we have to, we have to treat this, the Charter Amendment's different from a regular ordinance. And so the, the only other place to my knowledge that it talks about pay, uh, is if we, if and when we finally adopt the, uh, the pay scale, and I guess it'd be the executive pay scale, um, whether or not we do it now or in a few weeks or with the budget, that's what's gonna set the scale for the act, for the city manager. Yeah, I don't think there's anywhere else that we need to change in the immediate...
Thank you. Alman Gay?
Thank you. I just, I just need, um, I need clarity. So the, uh, Council Compensation, uh, Commission just recommended the city manager's pay range. And you're saying to ignore that and put the authority of the executive pay scale in the hands of the council in its entirety, not just for the city manager, but for all executives? Am I, is that, is, is that how, uh, understanding Amendment 1?
Uh...
You're just saying the parameters should be what we, what we're voting, right?
Well, yeah, we, I'm, I'm just, so it's, I'm, I'm saying we should put them, city manager with the same process that the other directors have as far as setting salary. I'm looking up the commission report now. I don't recall them making comments on the, uh, city manager.
They mentioned...
They say recommend be not less than $250,000 per year, not greater than $294 per year. Further recommend to the extent practical, practical under applicable city code... practical, practical under applicable city code, blah, blah, city manager's compensation should be higher than that of his heard direct reports, um, so they set the range, and I look at the other legislation, see what the range is, but that's, again, dealt with separately, um, you look at the amendment language, it just strikes it from-
I guess if I could just point a-
I might get some clarification from the city manager who's probably dealt with this a lot, so in a lot of jurisdictions and-
Michael Malinoff, City Manager, I feel very comfortable discussing this because it, for all intents and purposes, will most likely not affect me, but I do want to say, I did have a conversation with Alderman Savage and others about the idea that I have seen, um, in most cases, it being set as being proposed in this amendment, not by a, a committee, um, outside of the mayor and council, who normally would negotiate the salary with, with the city manager, the class and compensation report does propose a range, and the Commission, which I must say, and the mayor and I concurred, they were very good, I mean, they were very thorough, they were very supportive and, and very understanding, and they used that information. So I would concur with your recommendation that it's best that you, you use information that's gleaned through a, a class and compensation study or something of the, that ilk, or ICMA, come up with that range and negotiate with the city manager accordingly, um, that's how I, I've seen it, um, and there is information in the class and compensation study that you can-
And to clarify, the charter typically, if you look at it, does have sections for all the departments, but it just outlines the duties and responsibilities of each of the department, uh, typically don't deal with pay and compensation in the charter.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, Alderman Finlayson, yes? Apologize.
Um, when we created the city manager position in city government, uh, we deliberately treated that position differently from all the other directors, because all of the directors answer to the city manager, and the comp and class, or not the comp and class, but the Compensation Commission does utilize all of the information, uh, they do their research, uh, under the direction of our HR manager, and they utilize the information from the comp and class study, so I would oppose, and I plan to oppose, taking this out of the hands of the mayor, as well as the Compensation Commission, they are professionals, they have, in, in large part, several of them have served us on several Compensation Commissions, and they have, uh, not steered us wrong, but that was the deliberate intent when the city manager position was created, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, so we get the, or we get the recommendations, for example, which we voted on tonight, we've all talked to the Commission, they've taken in outside information, and then we still have to create an, another, uh, resolution based off of what they've recommended, yeah, an ordinance, excuse me, and so the, um, city council still has prerogative as it relates to what the city manager, ourselves, the, the mayor, um, are making, and so my question is, is the amendment necessary to accomplish that goal, because it's still going back to, uh, the, the, the council to, to make that ultimate decision?
Alderman Savage?
Um, no, I mean, because you, ultimately, you're right, it's set by council, either way, it's going to be set by the council and the mayor with the final vote, right? Um, but this, I think, just, because right, right now, the language that'd be stricken is that it shall be fixed by the mayor according to the provisions of the executive pay scale set by the Commission, um, and it's, again, it's just an, it's an atypical thing to have, typically, it's, um, the professional, because it was, there was a change in how the city, the city manager, he used to be a city administrator, I think it was, and that was more of a, a position right in, I believe, the, the mayor's office, uh, and then it was changed to be a bit more of a professional ICMA-aligned city manager, and I guess, I think what the city manager had, has stated is that it's typically how it's, the amendment reflects how it's typically done by ICMA-certified jurisdictions, that-
ICMA is not in, in the charter.
I just want clarity on if I support the, I know how it's operating if I don't support the amendment, if I do support the amendment, and it's an interim year, and a city manager is appointed, how do they, how is their pay decided? Do we just get in a room and come up with a number that we're comfortable with, or?
It would be negotiated like any of the other appointees, like for a director, that's negotiated between, uh, well, in those cases, between the city manager and the mayor, but in this case, it would just be between the, uh, the mayor and city manager that are-
But it's still coming back to us, and that's where I'm trying to figure out, how is the council intimately involved in that decision, because up until this point, we've never been involved in discussions as it relates to an employee's pay. I don't, I, I, I'm, I, I get, I know in the budget, but I'm talking about exact numbers, you know, there's a range or, or a class, and that discussion, and that, those negotiations are done with the city manager, HR, and assumably the administration, the, the council is not involved in that, and so if you eliminate, i- if, if we accept this amendment and that's eliminated, how would we be immediately involved in it?
I might get the city manager to give us the mechanics on that, because, uh, um, I just want to make sure it's distilled before it gets-
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. Before meeting with the Class and Compensation Commission, and the quality of the work that they did do, I, I wasn't so sure about that group, and in essence, you're taking the same information that that group came up with, that the Class and Compensation Commission came up with, that then the council either way would adopt as the pay scale for the city manager, so I think what they did is more or less validate the information that was given by the Class and Compensation Study, but either way, you, you reach the same goal, um, it's just that sometimes, uh, an outside group can be kind of arbitrary, because they don't have the knowledge base or the information to make the decision, but in this case, they weren't, they were very good, and they utilized the information we provided, so that's not really a good answer, but it's giving you the scope of where you would come up with the salary, you'd either have a, a, a Class and Compensation Study, which we have, or some sort of validated process, which you also have, which reached the same conclusion. What I have seen in my profession is more of the Class and Compensation end, and the salary is set by that scale, and the HR director meets with the city manager, and the mayor and council negotiate a salary through this, the HR director, and that's what you, you come up with, how you get to that point is what you're debating now, and, um, I'm frankly agnostic, uh, as to it, because I think the, I will admit, what Alderman Finlayson said is they did a good job, and, but they utilized the information we provided them, if that at all helps, I'm not sure it does.
No, I, I think it's, it's incredibly helpful, I, I find myself comfortable with, I think, how things have operated, and, um, I don't know how my colleagues feel, um, and so I, I wanted, I wanted to support the amendment, obviously, but I feel just more comfortable sticking with, um, you know, how things are, and I hope that you don't take that part.
Alderman, it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, part of the problem we're having, this charter amendment that we're discussing is primarily to put in the Department of Human Resources, Department of Innovation, Innovation, and we're being confounded because we slip in all of these editorial amendments to other things, so we have a whole bunch of editorial amendments on the city manager, which this, um, but, um, amendment refers to, I really wish we would not do this over and over again, it is very hard to follow legislation when we throw in these ancillary things, but since we are talking about the city manager, I would note that the city manager is not the direct supervisor of the department heads, if you read what is in here, furthermore, in fact, we're taking out the two offices that were reported to the city manager, because they're now departments, and by implication, departments do not report to the city manager, given the charter, further, in a alleged council manager form of government, which I subscribe we don't really have, there's nothing in here about the relationship between the city manager and the city council, which I find astounding, so when I was reading these, what I would call gratuitous editorial changes, it struck me that nowhere in here does it say anything about any relationship or responsibility of the city manager to the city council, so I was willing to go along and vote for this charter amendment, as the sense of the council seems to be, we want to elevate two offices to departments, but I really do want to come back and amend the city manager to put in that the city manager is in fact the supervisor of the departments, which is not in here, and also has a responsibility to have some sort of relationship with the city council, if you look at Article 4, Amendment 2A, council members are expressly forbidden from giving direction or really having much contact with staff, and the only way that we can have that in the practice has been, whenever I send an email and I want to send it to a department head, I always copy the city manager first, so that the city manager knows that I'm having some interaction with the department head, that's not required in the charter as we have it now, I think it should be, and it's implied by Article 42A that we really should be working through city manager, city manager operate, you know, manage the workflow for the departments, but, uh, I'm inclined to vote against this charter amendment now, because of all the confusion that is introduced, and I do think that we really ought to have the city manager's salary decided the same way we have every department heads decided, uh, and not through this, and it says here that the city manager directly reports to the mayor, and that the mayor is the one that negotiates the salary, and then it's approved by the council, just like we're going to do with the new finance director, really don't know for sure what the new finance director was offered, but we need to approve the new finance director's hire, you selected the new finance director, we approve, that's what the new resolution is offered here, but this is really turning into a confounding mess, because we're not just sticking to the primary purpose of the charter amendment, which was to elevate two offices to departments, and, and so I really do have some problems with, your amendment is really something that should happen separate from the primary purpose of creating two offices.
Is the city manager just wanted to sort of weigh in, I think she had some clarification?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that in Article 6, Operations, Section 2B, which is the city manager section, letter A, the first part of it, um, does say, the city manager, um, shall be the direct subordinate of the mayor, and shall have the, have supervisory authority over the deputy city manager for resilience and sustainability, and department directors, as provided by the city's organizational chart that is prepared by the mayor and accepted by the city council, so removing, by elevating human resources and IT into full department, full departments, they then fall under that existing provision of the charter, that the city manager has direct supervi- supervisory authority over department.
And that is what happens, right? You, there's, the directors do report to the city manager, not directly to the mayor, I interact, of course, but really, we know that generally, um, it happens through the city manager, so I'm not exactly sure what you're saying, because we know what happens in practical terms.
We know what happens practically, but you would think, instead of minutia, in the charter, not in the code, of doing, the city manager doing monthly reports, you would think that the whole city council management structure would be something that would be at the charter level, it's not mentioned here, and in fact, I'm wondering now whether all these things on page two of the subsection E with all of these things that are enumerated for the city manager ought not to be compatible with what's in the code.
Mr. Mayor?
But are you speaking to Alderman Savage's amendment here?
Well, I am, yes.
Alderman Savage, sorry.
Well, so, charter, I think, personally, I, I'd, I'd take charter amendments more seriously, and I think we all share that they're essentially equivalent to Constitution, um, and in that sense, I'd rather than have this potentially be voted down, or just at least be contentious, I'd be more inclined to move to postpone, so we can have, I don't think there's any absolute rush on this, but at least some time to see if Alderman Arnett has some amendments, send it back to committee or not, but it could go through rules and government, so I know we've got a motion on the floor ready for amendment, but would the motion postpone supersede that, or do we have to?
Motion to postpone or table?
Got to put a date on it.
I second.
Should I move to postpone it until the second meeting in March?
Get a second on that, and while it's, before we vote on it, Alderman Gay?
Thank you, I was actually, um, going to ask my question and then call the question, um, because I, 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 I share concerns like Alderman Arnett, um, but I'm also concerned now, if we postpone this, does it impact the, um, uh, the, uh, study that the, uh, HR has been doing with exempt employees and changing classifications, et cetera, I mean, should that all be carried at once, or how does that, how does one thing impact the other, I mean, is, is, has that been discussed in a full work session, or with finance, I see the Alderman from Ward One, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Alderman Hudley?
Yeah, um, Alderman Gay, I think it is the, it is my understanding from our city staff that they really would like to see the, this charter amendment, the, uh, O3424, and, oh, R5324, and R5424 all passed at once, at the same time, um, but furthermore, uh, I think I also agree with a lot of what Alderman Arnett said, but I also don't really think it's germane to this, uh, charter amendment, I, I would like to see a lot of what was brought up, brought forward as its own charter amendment, and I, I would support voting on this tonight, rather than postponing it, I think, we, we've had all four of these in front of us since I looked like, I think it was November, that I first put one of these in my newsletter, that we've been talking about, all four of these for a long time.
You, Alderman Neal?
Thank you very much, in all of this discussion, um, shouldn't we also amend this to add the assistant manager under purview of the city manager? Since, sorry, since it specifically calls out department directors and the, um, deputy city manager, so-
We, we have a-
You're sort of on an island.
We ha- we have a motion postponed on the floor, so.
I, I had, I think I had the-
I second.
And it was second, and then I think I had the floor last, because I raised a question to the Alderman, and he answered, and, and then I said I was going to call the question.
Two, one. There's a lot of hands up here, so, so we are speaking about the postponement now, please, so can we just keep it to the postponement?
Sure.
Um, and I might just go to the city manager before I come back to you, and the assistant city manager, if a postponement happened on this amendment, sorry, um, can we move forward on everything else, or does that, we can- or does that, we can, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Savage, Arnett, sorry.
First of all, charter amendments don't take effect for 54 days, so it isn't going to be happening quickly anyway. But secondly, and we discussed this at council lunch today, I really think that we need, first of all, the two resolutions have not gotten through the Rules Committee. And so I think we need to discuss it. If we're going to do all of these as a whole, as Alderman Huntley suggested, I think good idea, I would like to have a work session where the entire council, I was surprised at different things I heard from different council members at lunch. This is too important. This is big change in our classification and compensation, big change in the salary ranges. And I'm sorry, it's not the council's fault that this is taking so long. Remember, this was built into last year's budget, but we weren't even allowed to see the classing. It was built into the budget and I think that it is important enough, and I'm hearing certainly enough about it, particularly about the executive pay ranges, I think we need to take the time to do this right. But this urgency of doing the charter amendment with the ordinance is not appropriate because the charter amendment won't take effect for quite a while.
It has been in rules for three months?
Yes, and we have been discussing.
It's been in finance for three months, so that is a long time to have it in your committees. We would have to agree on that.
It's been in a lot of committees since, since it was.
Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This charter amendment and, and others have said we are kind of muddying the waters. If we look just at the charter amendment, it is about creating these two departments. That's what it does. The amendment changes the focus to the city manager and it need not to. So why don't we deal with the charter amendment? That is our major document, okay? When we created, and I beg to differ with Alderman Savage, we did have a city administrator. He had none of the authorities that the city manager has. We created, we recreated city government to create a city manager position. And Mr. Malinoff can speak of that personally because he was our city administrator. But the city administrator did not supervise departments. That came about when the code was changed to create the city manager position. So we can create these two departments and we can go back and discuss the city manager's salary and how he's going to be impacted, whether it's through the compensation commission or not. But please, let's just stay focused. We can at least get one piece of legislation through and we can come back and address the differences, you know? And the problem with rules not getting it through is because at every meeting we get new amendments, which require staff to go back and revisit or bring more information, do more research. And, and I, I hate to say it, but it's, we're trying to delay it until we get it right or until we kill it. So what is that objective?
We are about to vote now on the postponement, so everybody has their hand up here. And so I'd like to just pull a question and vote here on the postponement, okay? Alderman Savage?
It was my motion if I may, because I feel like procedurally, the Alderman brought up a good point. This language in this, in this section of the charter is going to change depending on how we vote on some of the later legislation, most likely going to get postponed as well. The point about the position, that title for the deputy city managers may change depending on the legislation later on. And so I, as well as, as well as how the pay for the city managers dealt with, if we end up creating the executive pay scale, we'll need to make sure this charter amendments changed, amended sufficiently. And the issue with, it's, it's not as easy to do charter amendments, charter legislation as it is our regular code because there is an additional public comment period, I believe before it gets the third reader, there are a couple other additional steps. And so I think it would be prudent for us just to at least postpone it so we get things straightened out.
We're going to take a vote on that, please. All those in favor of the postponement, say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
No.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Nay.
No.
Pass.
So we still have the emotion on the floor, right? CA dash 22, that whole thing, okay. Postponement just on the amendment. My bad.
Point of order.
Point of order. The postponement was just on the amendment?
No, no.
It's the entire, it's the entire legislation.
That's what I thought.
Alderman Gay?
Thank you so much. So we've just postponed this and now they're going to, now they're going to propose or debate this amendment. The Alderman from Ward 2 has added another amendment based off of language that she's read tonight. So now this is going back to rules. Will the amendments be ready and will they have enough time to discuss it so that when the time of the March 9th meeting gets here, we'll be able to vote on this or what's going to happen with this?
I think we're pushing dangerously close up against our budget. And so I know the assistant city manager and the city manager are urging us to move this through tonight, so we've held it up for one more, one more session. So if you guys could emphasize that or Director Dickinson could emphasize the need to move this forward so we can bring the budget forward.
Well, when, when.
Mr. City Manager?
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. One thing you did just mention is we are pretty close to losing our.
Can't hear you.
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. We're moving very close to the budget. We're also moving very close to the period of time that our finance director is leaving. So that's why we were suggesting moving it forward, the bulk of both pieces of legislation tonight and with the understanding that we're coming up to the budget and there are bits and pieces of it that you can certainly amend or work on and discuss in that context. That's what I said at the finance meeting and that's what I feel like today, even what we were just discussing. So it's still our preference and suggestion to the body that you're going to save yourself a lot of grief if you, you kind of take the step and then you can revisit it because it's not union. None of these are union contracts that you're dealing with in these two instances. So you're not going to be sued or, or the like. And that, that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, my question then is if.
I'd like to make a point of order.
I think I still have the floor from my point of order. My question then is should a motion of reconsider be taken? We vote in the affirmative because again, as the Alderman from Ward 4 has mentioned, the objective is to debate the city manager. Create legislation for that. Do not hold up the legislation to create the two departments and particularly the Department of Information Technology, which I think we need to expand and fully support and invest in considering we just had a cyber attack this weekend. I mean, there's, I, let's not hold this up. You could come back always with the amendment for the city manager. So we, we, we take a vote, reconsider, there's reconsideration, somebody in the majority? Okay, well.
Point, point of order.
Yeah. Alderman Huntley? And, and I would say also just from my point, I thought we were just voting on your amendment there. I didn't know we were voting on the whole legislation. So I feel like we've had a lot of time, so.
So yes, I would like, my point of order is to just remind the chair that he may make a motion to reconsider our postponement vote and I would encourage him to do that, given his remarks.
Thank you.
The chair did vote positively for postponement.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Moment of.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to step back and think globally as to what has occurred over the past 34 days, as to how we proceed with the budget, how we proceed with these amendments, with this legislation. I think that's extraordinarily important. I think I can't emphasize it enough. Thank you.
Anybody else? Because I am going to put a motion to reconsider forward. Anybody else?
You say the charter amendment does not affect the budget. It just elevates two departments, the two offices to departments. And the whole confusion is really because including the amendment.
I'd like to second the mayor's motion to reconsider.
I'm going to be in the negative this time.
You're voting against the motion?
Is it the motion to reconsider we're voting on now? Yes, of course, I'm going to move it. I'm going to say aye.
Do reconsider whether to postpone?
Reconsider the motion to postpone. CA 224. So then it passes.
Okay.
Mayor Buckley?
Voting reconsider.
Yes.
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
No.
Alderman Arnett?
No. Aye.
No.
No.
Alderman?
Aye.
Yes.
Got it? No? Okay, back.
But now we have, now we have CA 2 on second.
Okay.
No.
I need to want a clarification again.
Yes, reconsidered.
So we're going to vote again on whether to postpone?
Correct. Nope.
No, 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 you're voting.
It's on.
On the legislation itself?
On the legislation. But the amendment we haven't voted on yet.
Vote on the bill on second.
Okay. So we're not going to vote on the amendment?
Move the bill on second.
All right.
What? You postponed it. You, you guys just postponed. Two postponed it to the second meeting. So when you considered to reverse what you just did, so now you're at the point after on second reader, then if you want.
Okay, so could someone move? Do you need to move CA 2-24, please?
I'm making a motion to move CA 2-24.
And a second. And we're going to vote on it and then we can move the amendment. Okay.
Okay. Alderman Savage just said he wanted to move his amendment.
I will second the amendment.
Don't we have to vote on putting this back on?
You just did.
You just did.
Alderman Gay moved CA 2. You just moved CA 2 on, it's on second reader and it got a second. Alderman Savage moved his amendment.
Now it's Alderman Savage's opportunity to move the amendment, which I thought is causing a lot of confusion and that's what I want to postpone.
I'll move amendment one.
Okay, we've got a second on that. Thank you. Okay. Alderman Shandermeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we debated our opinions on amendment one in our previous conversation and I would like to call the question. I think we all have a good idea on our stance on this.
Okay, we're going to take a vote on the amendment now. And we'll probably do a roll call on the amendment. It looks like it's going to be close. Yep.
Mayor Buckley?
No.
Alderman Gay?
No.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein?
Alderman Finlayson?
No.
Alderman Shandermeyer?
No.
This motion? Four.
Right now we are back to voting on CA 2-24 on second, on second reader without amendments. Alderman Shandermeyer?
Mr. Mayor, I think we have all stated our opinions, not only on the amendment, but on the legislation as a whole or charter amendment as a whole, unless any of my colleagues have a strong opinion that they would like to add, I think we should call the question.
I'll second his request to call a question.
I thought that Alder Roman O'Neil made a good point about adding an amendment to add assistant city manager. Just wanted to give her the opportunity to potentially add that in as an amendment.
Need to be.
No. We're not going to make a motion for an amendment? All right, pass. Never mind.
I think that's not. Okay, again, we'll, we'll do a roll call. Yeah.
We're going to do a roll. Going to do, I forgot.
CA 2-24.
24 on second reader and Alderman Gay moved it and it has a second. So we're going to do a roll call. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett? Alderman Huntley?
Aye.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
No.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Epstein.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
And Alderman Huntley?
Shandermeyer? Beer.
I'm sorry.
No beer.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, okay? So that passes, okay?
Thank you. Can I get a motion on third reader, please?
Some hoot.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Mayor, hold one second.
This is a third reader?
Yes.
Third reader.
Okay. Please excuse me for a second. Who moved it on?
Shandermeyer, did you make a motion on third reader?
I would like to make a motion on third reader. I would like to second.
Thank you. We're going to do a roll call again. Mayor Buckley?
Would it be closer than that? Sorry. Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
Alderman Huntley?
Aye.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
No.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Epstein.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer?
Aye.
And CA 2-24 on third reader passes.
Something to talk about over the wings that we're not going to be eating? More to come. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item of the agenda for second reader is ordinances. O 225 is the first one.
Yes, sir. The next item of the agenda for second reader is ordinances. Oh, two twenty-five is the first one. W R N R Radio Tower lease with the city.
So move.
Second.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. My question is, if passed, how does this lease impact the ability of future development on the site? On or around adjacent to the site?
Go to the Assistant City Manager.
And projects proposed in this area. I'm curious if that'll be.
I will attempt an answer to that. Vicky Buckland, Assistant City Manager. The lease does include a picture of the area that is covered by the lease, which is obviously the tower itself and the area immediately around it. It is right near some other, other buildings and does not, the, the area covered by the lease is, is very closely adjacent to the tower itself. So the other, the other uses of that property are not really affected by that. There's other kinds of development improvements that could happen on that larger property despite this particular lease being in place.
Thank you, and I'm assuming that would also include, for example, at the last meeting, there was a debate about fences. If the developer wants to construct residential units, the, if, if, if we approve the lease, they could potentially go to a board of appeals. And
The leasing.
As the neighbor feel the proposed development.
The, the lease is, is for the tower as is? I do not believe the lease gives the right to tear down the tower.
I'm asking if they would tear down the tower. I'm sorry, my question was confusing. The property that we are making the lease for is adjacent to a vacant property that has proposed development for, in particular, affordable housing. But it could potentially, it potentially come back. If it does, if we do move forward with the lease, there is the potential that the leasing could go to the Board of Appeals for any future development adjacent to the property, correct?
Are you asking whether the lease abridges their right to participate in, in sort of normal having opinions about development?
My concern, exactly. My concern is that we give the leasing authority to go to the Board of Appeals and stop future development on their property adjacent to them.
I'm not aware that the lease gives them those kind of.
The lease would not give them those authorities directly. However, but as the leasing, would they not have the standing? To then go to the Board of Appeals and complain about a neighbor's development?
I would need to, I'm not sure I.
I think there's, there's, there's termination language in there that could resolve that. So I don't think they have real.
Yeah, I think that's a question.
I mean, I'm sure they could have, you can appeal anything, right? But there's termination language in it protects the city.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, as it seems to me both have a financial interest, criteria for standing, and they are recent property. So I think, point, they would meet the criteria for standing to file an appeal. Whether they win that appeal, could do that. That's my understanding. Criteria to have file an appeal.
The lease is terminable by the city, the city's discretion. Would eliminate standing.
So we're just saying that we could terminate, and that's not what they would want. So really, I mean, it's, we're overthinking it. Alderman Savage?
Yeah, just to reiterate with City Attorney, I think, believe you said that if we terminate the lease, then we eliminate standing because they would have no financial interest because we decided to terminate it. But I do think we're getting, parts getting ahead of the horse a little bit on this one because plus the lease only lasts until 2029. I don't, I'm not aware of any imminent development project for that property.
Okay, all those in favor, Alderman Arnett.
I, how much is this?
Five hundred dollars a month. In the lease.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Could I get a motion on third reader?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
No.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Layson.
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. Okay, the next bill is ordinance oh twenty-three twenty-four park and towing regulations.
So move.
Second.
Right. Alderman Neil.
I just have a quick question about the, I'm in support of this regulation, but a couple of people reached out to me today asking, does this mean if it's a towing company in Glen Burnie, that that's where the car gets towed?
I don't know. Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Manager, anybody have information on this, or?
Exactly right.
Do you have some information, Alderman Shandermeyer? You got your hand up?
By legislation. Um, oh, okay. So, yes, but this is applied to larger vehicles and abandoned vehicles. So why we wanted to expand this out is because for regular vehicle towing, we don't have a problem with getting contractors within the previous one-mile radius. But with larger vehicles, abandoned vehicles, abandoned trailers, we had problems with tow yards in that one-mile radius previously willing to take them because they take up a lot of space. Tow yards in this area are more limited on that, and so they would just be left abandoned on our city streets, taking up a large portion. So by expanding it out, we're now able to contract for those larger things, those things that are not willing to be taken by those closer distances. Those abandoned things, those larger things, they would be taken out to a hypothetical Glen Burnie.
But can you point out to me where it specifically says in the legislation that it's for larger vehicles? Because I remember that it was initially that, but I don't see it.
That's actually a Ms. Reuter question. It's in this.
Hi, Cynthia Reuter, Office of Law Policy Analyst. Yeah, it does, it does not differentiate between small and large. What towing company can do what, but transportation director to trying to stick with local companies to do the smaller vehicles, the things that they're willing to do, and the whole purpose of this is to get at the big vehicles that they, anybody. But it does not say that in legislation, does not make a difference.
Okay, so we could find ourselves in a position where we hire ABC towing company out of Glen Burnie, and we just start using them for everything. Potentially. There's nothing in here that prohibits ABC from taking on all of the cities towing.
Other than it's the city and the city's contractors that actually hire towing companies. So then city would have pretty over the counter. Mr. Lyles, can I?
I'm sorry to be putting you on the spot. I'm just trying to answer questions from constituents.
That would be in the transportation director's hands, right? So do you want to end it? Add that language?
Can I just say something? We issued a toll, tow company through my office, and that's done through the police. They have a rolling list of tow company vendors, and then they, they have one tow, they call this company, then the next one, the next company gets it, and so on and so forth.
I mean, it's Alderman Shandermeyer's legislation, what's driving it, who's driving it?
What's driving it is we have a couple of large trucks that have just kind of been sitting around, and we couldn't get towing vendors willing to take them.
You're trying to broaden it so we could do that?
Yes.
You, Alderman Gay?
Thank you. It does say in the staff report, it will make easier to license and easier to use abandoned vehicles, particularly larger trucks. But to the point that the Alderwoman from Ward Two has made, it's at the discretion of now either the police department or the Department of Transportation, which we need to figure out. So this should probably be postponed. I think it's too risky. One, we've had so many incidents. There is even a petition for the city of Annapolis towing, where, you know, residents have had stickers, they've been towed repeatedly. There's, we got a lot going on with, with the tow situation. I'd be more inclined to postpone this until that amendment can be made to protect personal vehicles. I obviously get the concern for commercial vehicles in residential neighborhoods, boats, trailers, et cetera, because we have that same issue on primrose. And so I, I sympathize with you, but I just don't think it's ready for prime time just yet. I'll make the motion to postpone oh twenty-three twenty-four until our second meeting in March. That's appropriate?
I'm amenable to that, but I will say if you could get something drafted by then, because if we just keep kicking the can down the road, it's kind of pointless. So, sure.
Are you just give it a large vehicle amendment now?
Alderwoman Finlayson has.
You, Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, I, I support postponing this, but I would also like for us to look at the tow companies that particularly our fire department uses. They have a specific, at least one specific company, and Ms. Eldridge could probably speak better to this than I. But they have a company on, on contract in case of one of our emergency vehicles were to need to be towed. So we may have access to companies that are closer, that can tow those larger vehicles. More research. Thank you.
Do we get a second on the motion to postpone?
Second.
Right, let's postpone it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item of the agenda is ordinance oh thirty-two twenty-four fire sprinkler system requirement clarification.
So move.
Second.
Here, we have some amendments here from Rules Committee. Oh, sorry, I voted in, sir. Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, I'm looking at it right now, Mr. Mayor. The amendment requires all buildings on Main Street and Francis Street to install in the historic district, to install these systems. So we're striking all, we're, we're adding all and striking commercial mixed-use residential and other single-family houses, I think it should be, and insert buildings on. So we're talking all as opposed to those delineated.
Okay, that's set of rules. Alderman Savage?
Was that seconded?
Second.
So that, this is amendment one. The law office issued an opinion that this is not legally sufficient because there's state law. I believe that says that we can't have this applied to single-family residents. And is that a correct summary?
That's correct, sir.
So I, we, I don't think we can pass this amendment, or don't think we should.
Mr. Mayor, that was not brought to our attention during the Rules Committee, or had we not, had we heard that, we would not have proposed this amendment.
What's the, it's the all, it's the all more than the single-family piece, right?
Are we asking the city attorney?
Well, I'm asking, is it just specific to single-family? Or you, you need all installed into the language?
That was the amendment from the Rules Committee, but if the city attorney is saying that that's not legally sufficient, then.
Point of order, this actually says the exact opposite. Unless I'm reading this amendment incorrectly, it says commercial mixed-use and residential buildings other than a single-family house. So it's not actually including single-family dwellings in the requirement. Am I reading this incorrectly, or is? Says on page two and line twenty-six.
That's what it's striking.
You're correct, I believe, Alderman Gay.
Because I'm not, I'm not seeing what it would be adding.
That's the language it's striking, and it's replacing with just buildings on. So it says, page two, after the word all, strike commercial mixed-use residential buildings other than a single-family house. That's the current language.
So, Mr. Lyles, could you weigh in and tell us if it changes to all buildings on? Would that make it legally sufficient?
The, the issue is if there, I'm not sure of the street, but if there are any single-family homes, there are any residential properties on there that are solely residential, you'll have a problem with the state law. But I'm not sure if there are any residential properties on.
Point of information, such as by word, there are not.
Finlayson, they're not on Francis Street?
There are not, depending on how you want to find single-family houses, but there are not single-family detached houses, which I think is what you're.
They are single-family.
So a townhouse would count as a single-family house in this case?
No, it counts as a single-family resident.
Our code defines townhomes as single-family attached.
Right, so that's, oh, okay, all right.
Okay, Alderman Pindell Charles, there's a lot of people's hands up, please.
No, I just want to bring to everyone's attention, we did get a Office of Law opinion from Ms. Berger, who outlined what the problem was, and I think we are articulating the same thing.
Okay, we're gonna vote up or down on this amendment. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. No, thank you. Next amendment is Alderman Shandermeyer's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In discussion with our Fire Marshal's Office and Department of Planning and Zoning, it has been clear that the current deadline that we have set of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-seven, we are not going to hit that for getting all of the buildings on these two streets sprinkled, sprinklered. And in conversation with the Fire Marshal's Office, they had said that twenty thirty-two was the original proposed deadline. And so we thought it would be prudent in economic matters so that we can still get use out of these buildings to push it back to that originally proposed deadline so that we could still get use out of these buildings, give the property owners some time to get into compliance. Our Fire Marshal's Office was in agreement with this, that it would be prudent to push the deadline back, and they were fine with this. And so I would ask my colleagues to be supportive of this amendment.
The Alderman needs a.
To push it back five years?
Correct.
The Alderman needs a second, second.
Oh, yes, I apologize. I need a second.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I have no problem with changing, moving it back, but I'm seeing here red under A that says all commercial mixed-use and residential buildings other than a single-family house located on Main Street in Francis. other than a single family house located on Main Street in Francis Street. That sounds very much like spot zoning to me. If it's only one property.
Point of order, that is, the red is language from the underlying ordinance. This amendment is only what's in blue.
I realize that, but the underlying ordinance cannot possibly.
This is the conversation on the amendment.
Yeah. Any other discussion on deferring it five years on the amendment? Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those property owners will be happy. Now we have the main amendment, Alderman.
Right, so on the main, I really question whether we can exempt a single family home, a single individual home. That sounds very much like spot zoning to me, and that is in the underlying legislation because it's red, right? So I would ask if this is a single building, I don't, I don't think we can exempt that.
I'm going to go to the city manager or assistant city manager. This is Alderman Tierney's legislation, so this is a long, from a long time ago, right?
Assistant City Manager, Vicki Buckland. I believe that there are a couple of single, I think there's only like two or there's three. Yeah, it's not just, it's not just one. And I think the article A, other than a single family house, I think is, is not intended to delineate that there is only one. I think it's.
So then it would seem it should read that other than single family houses in order to not be.
What are you proposing?
I would propose if it is more than one house, I don't know how many, what the limit is on houses for it to be spot zoning, but this specifically says a single family located on Main Street and Francis. I don't think it can be a single. So my, I would offer that this language be changed, other than single family houses located on Main Street and Francis.
Second.
Just to get it done, Alderman Gay?
I mean, does it matter? When I read it, it's saying, other than a single family house on either of those streets. I mean, you don't have to, okay, alright, fine.
We have to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's get that voted on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. So it's amended. And you, do you have some comments, Mr. City Manager or Vicki on that? Did you? Now we have pushed it out five years after 27, so. Okay, can I get a motion on this as amended?
So move. Second.
You?
Mayor.
Alderman Savage?
Just to point out, because part of the rationale is, what was the average cost? I think they said like 50,000 or something like that for a building to make this change. And so I think we need to make sure we keep pace with our sprinkler fund, make sure it has enough money over the course of the next whatever, four or five years till the new deadline. Keep that in mind for the budget.
You?
Fund it with federal.
Okay, yeah. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Got to get a motion on, what was it? Oh, no, it's not third reader. Got to get a motion on third reader? Thank you.
Second.
Adam City Clerk, please call the roll. Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman. Aye. Alderman?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer?
City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Okay.
So move.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is oh, 3424, FY 2025, changes in exempt service job classifications.
So move.
Get a second?
Second.
Okay. We have Rules Committee Amendment, Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, the Rules Committee Amendment one changes the title, well, the proposed legislation changes the title to Assistant City Manager for Administration. When we created this position, we were very committed and determined to create a, an assistant to the city council. And so this amendment would change it back to the original Assistant City. I'm sorry.
Rules?
Wrong, wrong amendment. I'm sorry. Let me go back. Amendment one speaks to keeping the title of Assistant City Manager. When we created the Assistant City Manager, we did not delineate on responsibilities. This would suggest that we have an Assistant City Manager for Administration. The question was, is there an Assistant City Manager for programs or for other areas of work? We have one Assistant City Manager. And so the interest was in keeping that position very simple.
Okay, and that's out of rules. Alderman Savage?
Second.
It's been seconded.
Would like to hear from the city manager's office because I, I mean, I'm inclined to, the city manager is such proposing, I believe, a bit of a different way to set up the office and to have, and I think it deserves some explanation because, I mean, again, if the city manager is suggesting this is going to help them better, that office better function, I think we should entertain it.
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. The issue really came up with the idea that you'd have an Assistant City Manager for Administration and an Assistant City Manager for public environment and public works. I've seen that system throughout the country. I'm really kind of agnostic at this point until we get the both positions better understood. Right now that we have the Deputy City Manager for Sustainability. The way I envisioned it is that position would have a similar title to Assistant City Manager. One would be more focused then on administration, human resources, IT support. The other one would be more, more over top of environment, public works, planning and zoning, so on. So that's where the idea came from. I know the consultants looked at the positions. They had a lot of comments about why one is different than the other. And we just came up with the administration to reflect the idea that if you were willing to take this the way it should go, have each one sort of designated over a certain area of the city. This position being more over administrative. At this point, until you make that change, it's really, you know, it's more of a long-term goal as opposed to making any substantive difference.
So just, could I just quick follow up on that? Should it be called then another deputy?
Yeah, I think it could, I would, because I think the distinction, one, they should be the same and, and they should either be assistant or deputy. Both be called the same title. I think the distinction creates confusion. When the consultants looked at the two positions, they too commented on it being different. And not reflecting necessarily the responsibilities of both. The assistant being more over top of all the operation that the city managers of and environmental, and the environmental just being environment. Not trying to confuse the issue, but it really depends on how far you want to take it. But I would say, call them both Deputy City Managers or both Assistant City Managers. That would make having it different.
I'm just going to go back to Alderman Finlayson, then Alderman Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Malinoff, you were suggesting that both Assistant City Managers, Deputy City Managers are comparable. So you're talking about reorganizing our city manager's office to divide into two separate and equal responsibilities?
That is an idea that I've suggested. It hasn't really, I haven't taken it too much farther. Candidly, part of that is because of my own medical absence. But it is something that I've seen throughout the country. When you have two different deputies or Assistant City Managers in an office and have them focus on certain areas of the city rather than. I would think, I would look at, if I were the council, I'd look at making the titles similar. And then as you look at the budget and going forward, look at how who they would supervise. Because if you look at examples that I'm familiar with, the way they break it down is a little more distinct. One more being administrative, the other being more services, internal versus external.
Where is the consideration for the professional knowledge that comes with these positions?
Well, that would be the job description and how you would design the job description. I, I think that can be changed through the, a review that the HR directors working with our consultants come up with. They get the exact title of positions. So you could, you could utilize that tool, come up with a specific title. But they are, they both have different titles and, and it is a bit confusing. And our consultants pointed that out.
I'm not talking just about titles now. I'm talking about.
Job description.
Needed for the respective positions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Just going to let him, please.
Because we're getting.
No, I would say that that would be a process that you would go through in deciding the job descriptions and the qualities you want in each position. For example, when I hired the Assistant City Manager, there were certain skills and abilities that I thought would fit what we needed in the city. Frankly, to balance my skills out and also to provide the best service for the mayor and council. And I think that's what we got. And we have another position that's more focused in on the environment. And what I have suggested and think could work in the future is that position be more broader and focused because there are various departments within the city that touch on sustainability and the environment. And you could have that position over top of, or being more directly supervising those departments as well. And that would be something that you would go through with a job description review and, and you could look at other cities, what they're doing. And it is something that I see quite often.
Thank you, Mr. Malinoff, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But something that you might, as Vicki mentioned, or the Assistant City Manager for Administration, mentioned something to look maybe in the future. And I've mentioned that to Alderman Savage as well and, and the mayor and others. These are ideas that may come at a bit different time, but I do think the idea of looking at the positions and giving them a similar title would make sense because it is a little confusing having one as a deputy, one as an assistant.
Alderman Gay?
Thank you. These are supposed to be small amendments and this is this is the third time this has happened tonight where we've taken an amendment that is going to do one thing and we open up a broader conversation. We just had a whole entire conversation about job description. When all this is doing is changing the name from Assistant City Manager for Administration and Assistant City Manager. He's just said, he's just said that he finds that we either change the name to they both match Assistant City Manager for Administration or for Resiliency, we change into Deputy City Manager. Clearly, this amendment's not ready for prime time. Clearly, this bill is not ready for prime time because there are so many questions as it relates to this simple amendment on a name change. Postpone it, get it back on March the 10th.
Thank you. I second the motion. There's a number of other reasons to postpone. But I think Alderman Gay makes an excellent point, which is you don't just change the name, you have to backfill it with coming in and explaining what you're doing. You're reorganizing the city manager's office by a simple name change with any of the substance behind it. And that's why the Rules Committee proposed this amendment to others, to come back to what's in the code until you backfill it with the substance of what the change is. I mean, this, this notion that there are two different levels of city, there's a Deputy City Manager and an Assistant City Manager, but they're co-equal. They're not in the description. And there's many other things if we go on with this, but I think we need to postpone. I'd be happy to.
Going to go to Alderman Shandermeyer and then just talk to the city manager about the delay, the postponement, how that is going to work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand discomfort in the amendments or wanting to keep the bill clean or however you go on the amendments, it's, it's fine, it is what it is. We each have our reasons. I would caution my colleagues, though, on further delays on this. We have been debating and hearing these for months. Rules and I believe finance as well has been hearing these for months. And it is time for us to take a stand on these pieces of legislation. If you choose to vote against it, that is fine. I personally have issues with this piece of legislation myself. And I will be voting against it as a whole, but that is my choice after hearing the entirety of the debate for months. I'm going to ask my colleagues to not vote to delay it further. Let's take a stand. We've heard the debates, we've had the time to go through this. Let's just go ahead and put our voice on the record.
I would say as it comes out of committee, I thought you'd have it all sorted out. Alderman Savage?
If, if this is postponed, then I just recommend that, because these need to, these need to come in a certain order to us. This legislation includes applying the executive pay scale to these positions when we've not yet voted on the executive pay scale. I think the executive pay scale needs to get voted on for this and if this comes back.
The executive pay.
Please let me identify you. Alderman Huntley? So Alderman O'Neil had a hand up before you, Alderman Huntley, sorry.
I just had a quick question about, in the staff report, it talks about report recommended that the city update and expand the options for compensation, pay adjustment. So, and that that was going to be given proposed rules and regulations rules in city government. Has that happened?
We're not complete. But it's on our agenda for the meeting.
Because that will also delay any implementation of it. Do we have the updated?
It didn't come out of Rules Assistant City Manager while you're still called that?
It's, that's, so it's a slightly different, it's a slightly different thing. What Alderman O'Neil is asking about is the separate pay rules that are just kind of the regulations part of that. Those are being finalized. Obviously, there are a bunch of, those last tweaks are, when we're expecting those to be ready at, at the next rules, introduced at the next Rules Committee. They, that's not something.
There's some important information possibly coming out of this in order for us.
This. The this particular piece of legislation, it removes one, one reference that places limits on what the pay rules can say about how often pay can be adjusted to once a year at the time that you hit. at the time that you hit your anniversary. But as got pointed out during the study and has come up in, in some other contexts as well, we do have situations around the city where we end up with occasions where it would be nice to be able to have, to have the authority to review pay at other times, not just on an anniversary date and only related to did you get an satisfactory or better rating on your performance evaluation. So there's payrolls associated with that idea, but for those payrolls to be even able to be introduced, that limiting language that's currently in code would have to be removed. That is really the only thing that this does. It doesn't, it doesn't establish the, the rest of those rules that would be within the, that regulatory framework, the payrolls itself. This just removes the limitation. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
There's a motion to postpone and a second on the floor. We are gonna be painting ourselves into a corner here. We are gonna be backing up against the budget and stuff like that, so, but I can see what the council needs some more time. So I think we'll just vote on the motion to postpone, right? For two weeks, you've given it-
We have to vote unless it's wrong.
I put the motion to postpone on the floor. It would give us to the first meeting, March the 10th. It's more than enough time. Rules and city government, I think, meets the first Friday of the month. So they would have an opportunity to meet. We get it at the next meeting. I just think there are obviously so many questions that they still have as it relates to just this simple name change in the amendment.
Nothing has been simple tonight, right? Okay, all those in favor of the postponement, say aye. 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 Opposed to the postponement?
No.
You.
So, point of information or question, Mr. City Attorney, I have a question about the way this ordinance is constructed, starting on page five and going on, because it is including things that are normally done in the budget. We do three things in the budget by resolution, fees, fines, and comp and class. And this is putting into code comp and class for certain departments, but not all departments. And I guess my question is, why do we do in the budget, class and comp, fees and fines by resolution? And I think the answer to that is because they change every year, so we don't want to put them in code. But this is going to be something that I'm gonna be bringing to the Finance Committee on the budget as a question also. If, I think there's a fundamental structural question about how we're doing business. Why do we do all of the budget by, by ordinance amendments except fees, fines, and class and comp, which we do by resolution? And you don't have to answer me now, but I think this is a question of procedure that, because I would object to having these things included in the ordinance unless we're gonna include for all the other departments their class and comp in, in the ordinance. So, and that's really my basic issue with this ordinance and why I'm happy we're postponing it. But I think that there's a fundamental procedural question that needs to be addressed by the law, how we do our budget. You don't have to do it now, but I'm just putting it on the record.
I would just say that the council, the code requires it that way. So someone voted to have it that way.
Right, so then why would we put this in code for this, these specific classifications and not put everybody else in? That's why I'm saying I don't think O-34 properly drawn.
Get to the bottom of that in Rules?
Yeah, I, I think we really ought to have a work session for the entire council to go over this entire package. And I think we can do that. Mayor, you're not even giving us your budget until the second meeting in April. We have all of March to sort this out.
Around the corner. We are losing Jody, that's one, one reason. Alderman Huntley?
I just want to address part of what Alderman Arnett said, and the idea that we need more time to talk about this. Finance Committee has had four or five meetings that were primarily about these. I mean, we've talked about it for probably eight hours at this point. And so evidently I'm in the minority, but I'm at the point of, we've talked about it, we've talked about it, we've talked about it, either vote for it or vote against it at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We're discussing FY, or O-3424. It's been postponed. What are we doing? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sergeant-at-Arms.
Mr. City, that's Rich. Mr. City Attorney?
The next item in Mr. Mayor's resolutions are 125 Thompson Street Park.
So move.
Second.
This should be easy.
Want to change it to Robert Eads Park?
Very helpful, Park.
Okay, I think this is just a roll call, right?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye. Alderman Arnett? Aye.
Alderman. Shandelmeyer?
Aye.
And please add me as a co-sponsor as well.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Sure, the next item is R-225 Demonstration Program to Build Green Roads on City Bus Shelters.
Is there a motion, someone needs to refer it?
Yeah. Like, it was supposed to go to, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Alderman Savage?
It was supposed to go to Environmental Matters, but I think it was just an oversight, so I'd like to just make a referral back to Environmental Matters.
Okay. We voted it?
We're gonna refer it back to the people. Didn't make-
Motion to refer it back, okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-625 Nonprofit Vendors During Fall 2025 Boat Shows.
Your motion to adopt R-624, and second reader?
Don't move. Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Buckley?
Aye.
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 Alderman.
Aye.
Aye.
You, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R-725 Itinerant Merchant Sales in the Historic District During Calendar Year 2025.
So move.
You, Alderman Huntley, you have an amendment?
Yeah, I, I might let Alderman O'Neil speak on it a little bit more, but essentially, members of the Finance Committee had some additional questions about the holiday market. Normally, we would have just said, let's bring the folks from that in and, and have a discussion at the meeting, but because we need to get this approved before Shamrock the Doc, we made a, the Finance Committee recommended simply striking the holiday market out and then presumably, or I'll speak for myself and say, I do still want the holiday market to be, to get this approval, but we want to get the overall thing passed in the short term that it needs.
Alderman O'Neil?
Do you have anything more to say?
I requested that the holiday market be pulled out as we are in discussion with them and not sure that they fit the description of being able to be on this list.
So move.
Because it's ten months away.
With an amendment with a second, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Alderman Gay?
I'm just clarifying, you will bring them back to the committee to add them at a later point this month, correct, I mean, this year, correct?
After we've had a discussion and had them in front of our committee.
I plan to introduce a second resolution that will be just for the holiday market, at which point they can come before the committee and we can talk with them about it.
And I thought it was a very successful holiday market, and can someone just explain it? What's the difference between having Shamrock the Doc there and their vendors and the holiday market vendors?
My question with the holiday market is, I believe that the times that it is occurring is actually against the mission of the Downtown Annapolis Partnership. The mission of Downtown Annapolis Partnership is to promote the business of our brick and mortar businesses and retailers downtown and bringing in 100 itinerant merchants on the busiest night that DAP plans for our local businesses is contrary to that mission.
I, I didn't hear any complaints, so I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I did.
I, I would say in contrast that, my understanding is that the holiday market is the only one of these that contributes funds back, only one of the ones on here that contributes funds back to the Downtown Annapolis Partnership. And also that they, I, I've seen some data that the holiday market was one of the busiest days in Downtown Annapolis. So is that taking away from our local merchants or is it bringing in more people? A tougher debate, sort of which way is that correlation going? But I, I agree that it was mostly-
Okay, so if you're gonna bring them back, we all support it getting in front of us again. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. 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 Opposed? Thank you. Can I get a motion on this as amended?
Don't move.
All those in favor, say, is it a roll call?
Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Buckley?
Aye.
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 Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Shandelmeyer?
Aye.
You, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-5324 FY 2025 Changes to Executive Pay ranges for the purpose of updating fiscal year 2025 annual position classifications and grades and specifying an effective date.
So move.
Mayor, I move postponement. It hasn't gotten out of the committee.
Got a motion?
Do you have a date?
To, to the second council meeting in March.
Second.
And everything is pushed back. All those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed?
Nay.
There's all those amendments. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R-5424 FY 2025 Changes in the Position Classifications and Pay Plan.
Mayor, move we postpone?
No, I, I stridently disagree with Alderman Arnett's motion. This, this is not the same issue as the other ones. We had, just again, we had hours and hours of debate on the other ones. This one is much more straightforward, and I've heard from all of you almost about positions we all want to get hired that are being held up because of this. This is distinct from the executive pay rate. This is dealing with many, many positions in our city government that we are not hiring for because this isn't done. This is much more straightforward. I really do not think we should postpone this.
I understand your position. I would wish that you would grant the Rules Committee the same consideration you're asking for the Finance Committee. We have not finished our decision. You may have, we have not.
I, I-
And that's why we're asking for it to be postponed. We are taking it up on our meeting on March. Hope we complete that. Then we will, and this one has clean along, issues is R-53.
I, I think the Finance Committee smartly made the decision to amend our agenda to do this before the other one because it's much more straightforward, and the Rules Committee had the same opportunity to do that.
I wish I was on the Finance Committee, but I'm not. On the Rules Committee. And the Rules Committee is taking it. I'll let the, the Chair of the Rules Committee speak, but we are still working on it and we're still asking.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have postponed action on this legislation numerous times. You're absolutely correct. And I will make a commitment that we will get this out of Rules at our next meeting, even if that means we don't have positions on it. We were trying to make sure we were in agreement in order to bring forward amendments that would suit everybody's needs. That may not happen. So it will come out of Rules in the next meeting, and if there isn't a consensus, so be it.
Alderman Huntley, sorry.
May I ask our Assistant City Manager, because I think we've heard a couple of times about positions, or maybe it's the Director of HR, about positions that are on hold for hiring because we haven't gotten this done. What are some of those positions that are currently on hold because this legislation has had three or four months and is still not voted on?
Yeah, there, you are, you are correct. There are, there are a number. GIS Specialist in Public Works, Program Manager in Water and Sewer, Pre-Treatment Manager, and a couple of others. Those are the ones that jump out.
I'd love to hear from our HR Administrator.
Yeah, but-
Tricia Hopkins, Human Resources Manager. They've gone through our list. We've, we've been successful in getting a number filled. We have about nine of them filled that were approved in the budget. However, the resolution is holding up about eight of those. So by the counts that we have right now, obviously, we have some that are part-time or contractual that aren't tied up in the resolution, but that's how many you have tied up and, and waiting for a vote.
Thank you.
Alderman Gay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank, our senior members, senior most members of the council have requested we postpone this bill for one week. They'll have it at the Rules and City Government meeting. It'll be brought to us immediately on March 10th. We vote on it that night. I, I mean, it's just, it's, it's that simple. We just let them, let, let them have this for a week. We'll come back with the same exact information, and at that point, Alderman Huntley, I would be more than happy to just pile through all eight or whatever amendments at that point.
Alderman Savage?
Just to get a clarification, what's the date of the next Rules and Government Committee meeting?
I think it's the 7th.
Okay, and our next council meeting is on the 10th.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, no pressure there. All good. Alderman Arnett?
Yeah, so, and some of the things that we're discussing are not the positions. We're discussing how we're treating deputy versus assistant. We're discussing the very differential treatments for career ladders and the numbers of career ladders, things like that that are pretty fundamental. Actually, some of the people that are being held up are people that I would really like to get see hired. I have no desire to hold that up, but I think there's more fundamental issues that we're still noodling around and working with Assistant City Manager and the HR Director. And these meetings are going long and hard, and we really, this is fundamental changes. I am a strong supporter of career ladder. I am not desirous of holding up doing that. I do have a lot of questions about how we're applying it in one place versus another, and we need to get that sorted out.
And we've been discussing them for a while, so this is the last two weeks, right?
Maybe.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the postponement, say aye. 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 Opposed?
Nay.
You. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
I can close the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. So is there anything else for good order? Mr. Alderman O'Neil?
Very quickly, you mentioned it earlier in your opening remarks, but Save Our Trees has saved a lot of trees. This past weekend, they were in Ward Two and partially Ward, Ward One, and I saw a number that it was 600 and some odd trees that were saved just on Saturday.
Oh, really?
I think they had, were having a- I think, um, they had, we're having a work session tonight, um, prior to the council meeting that I stopped in in. Um, there were about forty people in the room, which was really nice to see. Um, and Brian was there talking about how to not kill a tree, um, giving some people some really great mulching ideas. So thank you very much for all of that work. I know Alderman Savage had a lot to say about, you know, with Save Our Trees and getting funding for them. Um, but we do have a great group of people. So thank those folks.
Agree. Anybody else? I gotta get a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Right, lovely session, meeting adjourned.